First, we have the invocation Pastor Alexander. Pastor Alexander is going to come up and do the invocation. He's with New Spirit Church Ministries. And then we'll do Pastor Welcome, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would, please stand. It's all yours, sir.
As bow eyes closed. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to convene together as a community. Got to discuss matters pertinent to our future leadership and guidance and vision forecasting. Now we ask for your presence in this place. Let everything flow harmoniously, that we will all be on one accord. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Corcoran, we have roll call. Here.
President.
Here.
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 We're all here. Next, we have the minutes of the work session and regular meeting of June 26, 2017 for approval.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, we have presentations. Our first presentation is resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Jason Singleton as an employee of the City of Goldsboro and our fire department. So I'm going to read this real quick, and then Jason, you and Chief West can come up, and we'll do this.
Chief West.
Oh, well. You're retiring today, so you really are not that... All right. Resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Jason Singleton as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for more than eighteen years. Whereas Jason Singleton retires on November 1, 2017, as a fire captain with the Goldsboro Fire Department of the City of Goldsboro with more than eighteen years of service. Whereas Jason began his career on January 20, 1999, as a firefighter with the Goldsboro Fire Department in the City of Goldsboro. On February 10, 2006, Jason was promoted to fire engineer with the Goldsboro Fire Department. On October 31, 2012, Jason was promoted to fire captain with the Goldsboro Fire Department, where he has served until his retirement. Jason has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the City of Goldsboro desire us on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro of expressing to Jason Singleton their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over these years. Therefore, it be resolved by the mayor and the city council of the City of Goldsboro when we come on at number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during Jason's tenure with the city. Number two, we offer Jason our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall remain in full force and effect from this to 16th day of October, 2017. Offer this for adoption.
You choose not.
All those that say aye?
Aye.
It's official. All right, come on, Jason. Chief Whaley, come join us, sir.
Chief, I know you have some comments to say, so you start with your comments.
This is like talking about one of my children. Me and Jason, he came up when he started. I had him as a training officer. We've been doing a lot of fires together. He's been on my shield probably more than anybody else. Been with me since I became chief, he's made captain, and he's done an outstanding job for me. I will tell you this, this is not all of what he wanted in life, but he has definitely been a true firefighter. I can remember a lot of times that I didn't know Jason was going to make it out of them. He's been through a lot. They didn't let him. We followed him one time, but he's been through a lot of it. He hasn't been somebody that's laid back. He was somebody that was on the front line every time he worked. He was a good mentor to our other guys that worked under him. He's been a great leader, and I'm going to miss him, but I ain't going to miss him long. I think we've done work three days in a row, twenty-five. No, no, Jason, you've done plenty.
You want to say anything? All right. Well, all you got to do is smile, okay? Smile. There you go.
Let's get one with your wife. Jennifer, will you take that?
Sure.
You can give it out here to Jason.
I'm going to get him too, so he might talk.
So you smile.
Got it.
I think next, under the presentations, we have a Golden Star recipient, and Human Resources is doing that. Ms. Burnett?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The purpose of the Golden Star Award is to recognize city employees for their contribution to the City of Goldsboro. Its primary aim is to award employees for going above and beyond the normal scope of duties, as well as promoting the organization's values and beliefs of integrity, professionalism, collaboration, and quality of life. The star evaluation should specifically focus on job-related outputs and/or accomplishments in customer service, professionalism, problem-solving, quality improvement, teamwork, and community partnership. At this time, I would like for our nominees to come forward to present the September 2017 Star Award.
The Honorable Mayor Allen and the City Council, I come tonight to recognize Mrs. David Roster, a thirteen-year employee of the Solid Waste Division. David was nominated by citizens for dedication to the city. The citizen stated that David came home from his job, picked up trash and limbs around his house, not only during the week, but on the weekends as well. She stated that David cleaned up not only at his house, but along Warner Street and adjacent areas on Center Street. She stated that David goes beyond the call of duty to keep the city clean. The citizen stated that violent merchants jokingly called him "the local garbage man." He is employed in a low-level position with little recognition. Yet one wonder, how many at the management level have that level of commitment to the city? David Roster.
Hi, David. I think we got him backwards. Hold on a minute.
This is David. This is Dr. Stokes.
I don't want to give David Don's check. Go over here, smile. Get here where everybody's... Come on up. Come on up and give a favor. There you go. We appreciate what you do, David. This means a lot to clean this city up. We've talked a lot about cleaning the city up, and having somebody making that extra special effort is a really big deal. And on behalf of the whole city council and our team, we really, really thank you, and you keep up the good work and try to get some people to help you. Don't lose that now. We got one more? Is that right, Ms. Burnett?
This is... See, he doesn't work in my division, but what I did notice, one day coming back from City Hall, heading back to Public Works, was coming up Stronach Avenue, and I saw work lights flashing, you know, the safety lights. And approaching, got closer, I saw Mr. Stokes jump out of his vehicle. He cut on his... He cut on his strobes, got out the vehicle, and he was helping an individual who was towing a car, if I'm correct, right? Yeah, he was towing a car, and there was material from the automobile that was falling off and falling out on the floor. And so as I get... Or on the ground, so as I get closer, I see him running across the street in the rain and with handfuls of automobile parts, and this elderly gentleman comes out from around the car that he was towing, and he's... And Donald was helping him pick the things up. So that's why I nominated him for the Star Award, and that's why we're here tonight. Even though he wasn't in my division, I was made aware that we could nominate anybody, pretty much. So I spoke to Mr. Carter, his direct supervisor, and I said, "Hey, Woody, who is that guy right there? This is what he did." And he actually helped me write up the submission.
All right. Good deal. All right, Donald, you got to do it. You have to smile. Look at the... Look at the... Did you see that far back?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for the extra effort. We appreciate it. Okay, so next, we're going to move on. That's all our presentations. We'll move on to public hearings. CU 1617, Michael Skels.
Good evening, mayor and councilmen.
Good evening.
CU 1617, Michael Skels. The property is located on the southwest corner of North William Street and Beach Street, and indicated on the site plan you see on the screen. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a used car lot. The property is currently zoned general business. The sale of used vehicles is a permitted use within this district only after the issuance of a conditional use permit approved by city council. The property was formerly operated as a used car lot, and most recently as reborn auto body and repair. The submitted site plan indicates one existing 870-square-foot building proposed for use as a sales office located at the front of the lot. Another existing 1,500-square-foot, three-bay garage located at the rear of the lot is proposed for washing and detailing automobiles. There's a six-foot-high fence or opaque security fence that separates the sales office from the garage. And the site is accessed by one oversized curb along North William Street. Two additional curb cuts are provided along Beach Street, one of which provides access to the rear of the facility. With regards to parking, there are up to fifteen display spaces, five customer spaces, and two employee spaces. Hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, with one employee. Due to existing concrete and asphalt which covers the entire property, the applicant is seeking for a modification of the city's landscape requirements. In addition, half of the parking lot along North William Street is owned by NC DOT as a public right-of-way. According to the city's Unified Development Ordinance, no portion of a public right-of-way can be used to satisfy off-street parking and circulation requirements. A modification will also be necessary. At this time, there is no action. The Planning Commission will have a recommendation for council at your November 6 meeting. Here are a few shots of the property. Any questions?
Thank you, Jennifer. Could this lady just be sworn in? Okay, so this is a public hearing for CU 1617, Michael Skels. If anybody would like to speak, you're going to have to be sworn in. So if more than one person's going to speak, maybe all of you come up at one time, and the clerk can do it one time. Does anybody want to speak for or against in this? Anybody want to speak? That's even better. We'll close the public hearing and move on to the next.
Item E is continued public hearing. This is for the deletion of ETJ for Pate Property and Mills Property. Both properties are located east of North Cottonwood Drive and do not have frontage on a street. They are both currently vacant farmland. The property is indicated in the red area on the map. Pate Property is an overall fourteen-acre partial owned by Morris and Charlene Pate, and approximately 5.85 acres are located within the city's ETJ. The tract is on R-16 residential, and the remainder of the property would be subject to requirements of Wayne County. The Mills property is an overall forty-four point seventy-six-acre parcel. Approximately sixteen point eight-eight acres are located within the city's ETJ. That tract is on R-16 as well, and the remainder of the property would be subject to the requirements of Wayne County. The owners of both properties have been approached about development of a solar facility, and were told that any construction within the area that's located in the city's ETJ would be subject to the city's requirements as they relate to all dimensional and performance standards. As a result, the current offer... Our current owners have requested that the city relinquish their jurisdiction on the portion of each property within the ETJ in order to allow the entire site to be developed under one set of regulations. A notice of public hearing was prepared and advertised in a newspaper for two weeks. All adjacent property owners were notified of the hearing by mail, and the property was posted indicating that a public hearing was to be held. Upon request of the representative for the applicants, the city council at their public hearing held on August 21, 2017, continued the public hearing on this matter to today, October 16, due to unforeseen conflicts. At this time, there's no action necessary, and the Planning Commission will have a recommendation at council's meeting on November 6. Here are a couple shots of the property. Any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you, Jennifer. So this is a continued public hearing for the deletion of the ETJ for the Pate Property and the Mills Property. Would anybody like to speak? Yes, sir. If you would, sir, give the clerk your name and address, please, sir, as you get here. Will you give her your name and address, please, sir?
Herman Crumpler.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Herman Crumpler. I live right across from this property. I think there's some important things need to be considered before you take ETJ. The drainage for this land is going to go through Goldsboro. And I've heard no information on what kind of chemicals are going to be in the ground from the wiring. Plus, you're going to stagnate two housing developments. One on Highway 111 and one on Stony Creek Church Road. This will be a sixty-plus-acre, near about seventy-acre block there where there won't be any houses. And another thing, it's close to the hospital, it's close to the interstate. It's just too valuable to the City of Goldsboro to let it go without asking a whole lot of questions.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. If you would, would you please give the clerk your name and address, please, ma'am?
Good evening.
I am Nancy Mills. I do live on Cottonwood Drive, and I own some of the acreage that's being considered here. I bought this farm from a cousin who lives in Florida, being concerned that it stay in our family after he had been trying to sell it for some time. This was a farm that had been owned by our grandparents, so I have a long history with this land. I do support the property being removed from extraterritorial jurisdiction status, believing it will benefit both me and my heirs in the long range for all the acreage to be only subject to the guidelines of one local government. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else like to speak? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Morris Pate. The property that is being... Was shown on the map has been in my family's possession for years. Before, it was my father's. To his passing two years ago, it was my grandparents', and they had it for... And it was inherited from their family. This property, I am for the zoning being done away with as far as the ETJ, and so that I could offer my child a means of being able to fund her college education. Currently, it is farmland, and the amount per acre is nothing near what I could get for having a solar farm. I'm an educator in St. Louis, Carolina. You know what it's like and how the budget is balanced upon our shoulders. This derives the means by which I will be able to send my child to college. So this is why I'm asking for you gentlemen to do this, so I can further her education and leave her something for the next couple of years.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody? Yes, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Lathan Grimes. I'm with Cooperative Solar. I'm here on behalf of the solar company that's interested in potentially putting a solar farm on this property. If there are any questions about the solar farm, I'd be happy to answer them. At this point, I can say that we've applied for permission with Duke Energy to build a solar farm. That happened about a year ago. Probably have another year until we find out for certain, but the company, Strata Solar, which is a North Carolina company, has a number of solar farms in Wayne County and would, you know, conduct the farm in a very responsible way. We're also willing to discuss, in addition to any kind of vegetation buffer, that the county would require, an opaque fence if that's what some of the neighbors on either Cottonwood or Williams Circle would want.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? All right, with that, we'll close this public hearing, and we'll excuse our hard-working Planning Commission, and thank you for what you do. And we look forward to you meeting to discuss both of these items. And that will be when? Next... When's the next Planning Commission meeting?
October 30.
October 30. Okay, and it's here at seven o'clock? It says next door, it's at seven o'clock, so just in case anybody wants to come to that. All right. Thank you, Planning Commission. We appreciate it. Item F.
Item F is contiguous annexation requests for AAA mini storage. The city council at their meeting on October 2 scheduled a public hearing for the proposed annexation of the subject property. A public hearing notice was properly advertised stating the time, place, and purpose of the meeting. If the council determines that the proposed annexation meets all the requirements of General Statute 160A-31, it has the authority to adopt an annexation ordinance. The area being considered for annexation is located north of Industry Court between Pate Town Road and US 117. We know it is North William Street. The site is currently vacant. Development plans have been approved for the expansion of the existing adjacent AAA mini storage operation. It is 2.92 acres, and the property is currently zoned I-2 industrial. A adjoining property zone is to the north, you have R-16. To the south, east, and west, you have I-2 industrial. The area is adjacent and contiguous to the city boundaries on all sides. Fire protection will be provided by existing city personnel and equipment. Police protection can be provided by existing city personnel and equipment. The city will be able to provide commercial refuge service to the site upon request. No street section is included with this request, and the city water and sewer service is available. Estimated revenues are $200, and this would... If annexed, this will be added to District Number Three unless the city council instructs the city staff to include this area in another district. By motion, after the public hearing, adopt the attached ordinance annexating... Ooh, excuse me. AAA mini storage property effective October 31. Again, the property is indicated in the hatch area, and here's pictures of the site. Any questions?
Where is this? One more time.
Industry Court.
Over the movie theater? Oh, and this will be in District Three.
Any questions?
Any questions? All right, so this is a public hearing for the continuous annexation request of AAA mini storage. Would anybody like to speak? Would anybody like to speak? Okay, we'll close this public hearing, and you have a recommendation, once the public hearing is closed, to adopt the attached ordinance annexing AAA mini storage effective October 31, 2017.
Move to adopt the request for AAA mini stories for contiguous annexation.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same. You get it? Okay. Motion carries. All right, so with that, we're going to move to our public comment period time. We generally limit public comment period to three minutes, so if you would observe that, I would really appreciate that. It makes it a lot better. We do have two folks that have asked to speak for longer, have called up, and they want to speak about what they were doing a little bit longer, and we have granted that. One would be Pastor Alexander. So Pastor Alexander, come on up. And I'm not about to mention what you're going to speak about, because I couldn't say it. So you tell us.
Again, greetings, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
Pastor Marvin Alexander, I am also the founder and executive director of Mafibashet Project Incorporated. That's the word he said he couldn't use.
Say that slower.
Mafibashet. It's actually a Hebrew word, a Hebrew name. The son of King... Grandson of King Saul, who was the grandfather or father of King Jonathan. There was a pact that was made between David and Jonathan, that if anything happens to you, I will take care of your children. And that went both ways. Well, as the kingdom was being overthrown, accidentally, Mafibashet was dropped, and he was crippled from the waist down. It was not intentional, it was an accident. Well, where this project stands, MPI for short, our mission is to assist those that are just as involved, whether it's their returning ex-offenders, or whether they're currently serving on probation and parole. Our mission is to assist them and make them productive members of society again, tax-paying citizens. And as we know, when people are employed, that affects our crime rate directly, because the more productivity you have, the better outcomes you have within the community. At this time, I'm asking anyone in the audience that is affiliated with MPI, the Wayne County Reentry Roundtable, please stand at this time. As you can see, this is not something that has just started just now. We've been going at this... Maybe see, thank you. We've been going at this for over two years now. I've met with you briefly sometime in the past. I've had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Stevens as well. Just wanted to bring to your attention, as a city council, some of the things we're actively doing. Some of the partners we've already gotten, and they're enclosed in that pamphlet, you can read at your leisure. We have Wayne... Excuse me, NC Works. We have Young Families Connect, which is an affiliate of Wayne County Health Department, Catholic Charities, Police Department. I want to take a moment to just stress that. We are the community resource provider for the GPAC program. So in other words, we are that entity when someone comes through the GPAC. For those who do not know, that is where they have identified people with potential to recidivate. We take them under our wing, we take them through a mentoring process. We have been successful in the last two years, or shooting, in this year, with getting eleven ex-offenders hired. That is with high-grade misdemeanors or higher. Eleven hired. We have been successful with housing an entire family. We have also been successful with getting a sex offender housed as well. We have been successful with getting four people actively enrolled and engaged in Wayne Community College. So there's a lot of things that we are doing by collective efforts. Again, I go back to our partner list. Goldsboro Police Department, Salvation Army, GPAC, as I've mentioned, Wayne Community College, WIWA, NC Department of Public Safety. I am a TAN certified coordinator, meaning Transitional Aftercare Network. I can go into prisons within the state of North Carolina, start a file on those that will be turning back to Wayne County, and start the process from the inside out. Triangle Comprehensive Health Services, Wayne County Day Report...
So if you would observe that, I would really appreciate that. It makes it a lot better. We do have two folks that have asked to speak for longer, have called up and they, uh, wanted to speak about what they were doing a little bit longer, and we have granted that. One would be Pastor Alexander. So Pastor Alexander, come, come on up. And I'm not about to mention what you're gonna speak about, 'cause I couldn't say it. So you tell us.
Again, greetings, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
Pastor Marvin Alexander, I am also the founder and executive director of Mefibashet Project Incorporated. That's the word he said he couldn't get.
Say that slower.
Mefibashet. It's actually a Hebrew word, a Hebrew name. The son of king, uh, grandson of King Sa- Saul, who was the grandfather or father of King Jonathan. Uh, there was a pact that was made between David and Jonathan, that if anything happens to you, I will take care of your children. And that went both ways. Well, as the kingdom was being overthrown, accidentally Mefibashet was dropped. He was crippled from the waist down. It was not intentional, it was an accident. Well, where this project stands, MPI for short. Our mission is to assist those that are just as involved. Whether it's their returning ex-offenders, or whether they're currently serving on probation and parole. Our mission is to assist them and make them productive members of society again. Tax-paying citizens. And as we know, when people are employed, that affects our crime rate directly. Because the more productivity you have, uh, the better outcomes you have within the community. At this time, I'm asking anyone in the audience that is affiliated with MPI, the Wayne County Reentry Roundtable, please stand at this time. As you can see, this is not something that has just started just now. We've been going at this, maybe see, thank you. We've been going at this for over two years now. I've met with you briefly sometime in the past. I've had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Stevens as well. Uh, just wanted to bring you to, to your attention as a city council, some of the things we're actively doing. Some of the partners we've already gotten, and they're enclosed in that pamphlet, you can read at your leisure. Uh, we have Wayne, uh, excuse me, NC Works. We have Young Families Connect, which is an affiliate of Wayne County Health Department, Catholic Charities, Police Department. I want to take a moment to just stress that. We are the community resource provider for the GPAC program. So in other words, we are that entity when someone comes through the GPAC. For those who do not know, that is where they have identified people with potential to recidivate. We take them under our wing, we take them through a mentoring process. We have been successful in the last two years, or shooting, in this year, with getting 11 ex-offenders hired. That is with high-grade misdemeanors or higher. Eleven hired. We have been successful with housing an entire family. We have also been successful with getting a sex offender housed as well. We have been successful with getting four people actively enrolled and engaged in Wayne Community College. So there's a lot of things that we are doing, uh, by collective efforts. Again, I go back to our partner list. Goldsboro Police Department, Salvation Army, uh, GPAC, as I've mentioned, Wayne Community College, WIOA, uh, NC Department of Public Safety. I am a TAN certified coordinator, meaning Transitional Aftercare Network. I can go into prisons within the state of North Carolina, start a file on those that will be turning back to Wayne County, and start the process from the inside out. Um, Trans, Triangle Comprehensive Health Services, Wayne County Day Reporting Center, and WHFL-TV are some of our, our partners. Uh, we are not just running solely on the concept of if it's in a bubble. We do have state buy-in and federal buy-in. At this time, I'm asking Mr. Victor Hennett if he will please come, we'll make it brief. He is with the NC Commerce. He is the state regional former offender specialist. He's also gonna provide you with a package as well to look at at your leisure. We are not coming tonight asking for funding. We're coming tonight to make you aware of what we're doing. And to show you the benefit of this organization and our partners coming collectively together to make an impact in Wayne County. To make a direct impact in Goldsboro. We have already been, uh, viewed and requested to look at going further, uh, by the Department of Probation and Parole, and expanding into Lenore and Green Counties. So this is a serious movement. And we would very much like to gain and garner the positive push and support of our local state government. Mr. Hennett?
I'm gonna just let y'all know that I'm long with it, but I'm gonna be short and brief. What we did, in order to be able for you to, um, understand what, what we've been doing to try to impact your community, is we've given you our minutes to all of the meetings that we've had for the reentry roundtable. My, I am, uh, the, uh, regional former offender specialist for the North Carolina Department of Commerce. Uh, there's only six of us, there's seven if you include the supervisor. I cover 29 counties, in which Wayne County is one. And my job is to organize communities around this issue. Um, it's a statewide, uh, initiative. Uh, we probably have about, we intend to, the governor and the Department of Public Safety intend to fund at least 15 more reentry councils, or 15 reentry councils total. We had five that had started about five years ago as a pilot project, and we've expanded on that. We do have federal and state buy-in. I've been contacted by everybody from Congressman Butterfield to Senator Tom Tillis. And all of them are on board with this issue and this effort of reentry. Uh, what we're trying to do as a community is to reduce the cost of recidivism. To increase the safety. And to have community buy-in to let you, as representatives of this fine community, know exactly what the issues are in terms of where we need to go. We get buy-in, we also have to mention that on the reentry council, we also invite people who had a background to be a part, an active part. Okay? Right now, there's about, in this northeast region, there's about 22 counties covered with some sort of roundtable or official reentry council. And we're trying to make Wayne County an official reentry council. We just want you to know what we've been doing. We've documented it. Uh, we've gotten partner buy-in. And our, our sole effort is to assist the police in reducing some of the cumbersome issues that come up after they return from, from prison. Primarily housing, education, jobs, food, shelter. These are the things that we're running into, I'm sure you know about. And so, we're trying to come up with a solution. As you mentioned, we're not asking for funding at this time, but you know it does require that. Um, what we're looking for is to find out what resources are already available and try to create a seamless kind of communication level, so we can maximize what's already being done. That way, we do come to you. We know exactly how much is being invested in this issue, and we coordinated it so that we can have an efficient request for what we need or what we should have. And the state also, the state also has funding, which the governor has approved, that we're gonna try to make ourselves official. We're gonna buy their guidelines, so that we can, they can see this as well. Um, there are also the Department of Labor that has guidelines. We want to be official for them. And Department of Justice, they have guidelines, we want to be official for them. So we're thanking you for letting us stand here before you and giving us an opportunity to tell you what we're up to. And let you know that we're here to support any efforts you have to reduce crime and increase safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I do want to take a minute and apologize. I don't, I'll be honest, Pastor Alexander, I haven't met you, but I didn't realize y'all were doing such good things. And we will get, we will get smarter on it, and, and I'm sure all the council will, and we'll have more dialogue. But we do thank you very much, because it does mean something to our community. And, and I do thank you. Alright, so with that, um, our next person that had asked is Tessa Brennan? Just, okay, Tessa, come on up. How are you tonight?
Hi, good.
Good.
Thanks for having me here tonight. Mayor Allen and council members. Um, so again, my name is Tessa Brennan. I'm here to talk to you tonight. Um, I'm here on behalf of a nonprofit organization called Second Chance Haiti. Uh, and we just want to partner with the city, um, in order to have a fundraiser downtown, um, in the month of November. Um, just a little bit about me, um, I'll try to keep it quick, 'cause I, I do value your time tonight, and I wanna, wanna keep it short for you. And, but I am from Goldsboro, um, grown up here, lived here all my life. Um, and as an adult, um, just being able to see downtown grow, um, has been really exciting. And so I'm really excited to just present a little bit of information to you tonight, um, and talk to you about how we want to partner with the city, um, to complete our fundraiser and, um, just to get people downtown and get people more involved, um, in the downtown area. So, um, you're probably asking yourself what Second Chance Haiti is. Um, I'd just like to give you guys, um, some brochures, just to pass the, there's one for each of you. Just some information there, um, about what we do. Um, so Second Chance Haiti, um, has been operating as a nonprofit organization for the last two years. Um, and what we do is seek to provide a second chance for the children of Haiti, specifically in two orphanages that we currently support. Um, so what we do is come alongside these orphanages that are struggling, um, to meet the needs of the children that they, they have. Um, currently, we, um, support two orphanages in the Quata Bouquet region of Haiti. Um, it's a pretty central location. Um, and one thing that we do is try to meet their educational, emotional, and physical needs. So we come alongside these orphanages that are struggling, um, to provide things for their, for the children that they're, um, they're caring for. And so we try to make sure that they have clean water, food, um, for every day. Um, some of these orphanages struggle to be able to feed their, their kids every day. So that's something that we try to help them with. We also get them access to education and the medical care that they need. Um, you know, being children, um, they need routine care, as well as, um, any emergency care that may come up. Um, and in Haiti, if you cannot pay for your medical care upfront, you get turned away. So that is something that we, um, really advocate for. And, um, we also, um, like to send them to school, of course. Um, in Haiti, that's something that you have to pay for out of pocket. Um, there's uniforms involved, and so we try to supply all the needs, um, that they have and try to partner with these orphanages, um, enable, and enable them to, to meet the needs of their children that they care for. Um, so a little bit about what Second Chance Haiti does is, um, we have a child sponsorship program. Um, so children can get sponsored for, um, you know, a monthly amount to help, um, their needs get met. And then we also have, um, mission trips that we take into Haiti. So we take about five or six trips a year. Um, I was able to go my first time in December 2016. An incredible experience. Um, so we take teams of, um, no more than 20 people at a time. Again, five to six times a year, we're able to do that, um, as well. Um, and those trips are funded, um, by the individuals that want to go on those trips. Um, so specifically at this time, we, um, want to partner with the city to, um, complete this fundraising event. Um, and the funds that we raise are gonna go towards our vision fund at this time. So our vision fund, um, is really aimed at, um, continuing to purchase a property in Haiti that's gonna just allow us to expand our organization. Um, so it's gonna allow us the space, um, to build a new orphanage for some of these children that are in a more long-term orphanage care situation. Um, and then it's gonna allow us to, um, just to continue to invest in the local communities there and the local people, and help teach them some sustainable skills. So we're gonna be able to use the property to do that. And also house the teams, um, that come into Haiti with us. Um, as right now, we'll go in and we'll stay at the orphanages that we support. This is just gonna allow us, um, to have a space for our teams, um, to go to. Um, so really, what we want to do, like I said, is partner with the city and really make this event as successful as possible. We want to get people downtown. So, um, I've already started some groundwork with some local establishments downtown. Um, and they're on board and ready to help us raise these funds. Um, so we really just want to get people downtown, um, to hear more about Second Chance Haiti and, um, support us. And then we just want to get people more exposed to downtown, let them know that there are things going on down there. Um, get them in, um, some of the businesses down there that are gonna partner with us, stimulate the economy down there. Um, and that's really what we want to do. So we, um, as going forward, as we're continuing to plan, we just want to ask the city to partner with us. Um, and, you know, help us, um, procure anything that we may need for the fundraiser, um, as simply as just a few things through the Parks and Rec, um, department, that kind of thing. So just wanted to share, share some information about the fundraiser that we want to do, and maybe how the city can, um, help us as we continue to plan.
Well, we appreciate your presentation, and I will tell you, doing something downtown, we are the city, and we are a little bit governmental, not too bad there. But if you want to do something in November, you probably need to contact the clerk's office pretty quickly.
Sure.
Or Parks and Rec, if you're going through them, whoever, so that we can be sure we tell you the proper steps, forms.
Definitely.
Stuff to do, so that we get off to a good start.
Awesome.
And I'm sure we'll help in any way we can, but, but if you contact them, or, so that we can help, we'll be glad to help.
Yeah, we'll do. Thanks so much.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Have you met a lady by the name of Wendy White?
Wendy White? I don't believe so.
She's very active in Haiti.
Okay.
Children, uh, uh, program. She's not from Goldsboro.
Okay.
But she's very active, she goes there often.
Okay.
And she's been a very big contributor, in both time and otherwise there.
Right, that's amazing.
Were you in the Word of Truth and all that when you attended Expo?
Yeah, we were actually there, um, that day.
You signed me up?
Yeah, we did. We sure did, I thought you looked familiar. Yeah, we were just at a community expo, um, that was held, um, here, what, three weeks ago? So that was a really fun event. Um, just able to go there and, and tell people about our kids and, and get people signed on to be sponsors. And it's just really fun, so, yeah, thanks.
Well, I admire what you're doing. You know, anytime you can sow some seeds like that, it's just gonna come back. So, you know, I, I, I think that that would be great for the city of Goldsboro to plant some seeds. This is gonna come back here.
Right, yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time again, and I'm really looking forward to, um, just, you know, collaborating with the city as we just plan this fundraiser and, um, just help make a forever impact, um, in these children's lives in Haiti.
And how much is a dollar worth there?
A dollar is the equivalent of, um, their, their form of currency is called goods. And that's, so sixty-two and a half goods is one dollar here. So, um, for thirty dollars a month, that's our child sponsorship program is set up for. So for a dollar a day, um, we're feeding these kids and getting them clean water. And so that's about sixty-two and a half goods a day. Um, can just make a monumental impact on their lives and let them know that, um, doesn't only meet their physical needs, but it lets them know that someone cares about them, and someone loves them. And that's not something that they know, like, um, a lot of the kids, um, you know, in America or other established countries. Um, they're left alone, um, a lot of the time. Um, and they either don't have parents, or have parents that can't take care of them. So, um, I think that our, our big goal is to raise these funds to expand our organization so that we can just make that forever impact in their lives and give them that second chance.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, have a good night. Okay, so we'll continue on public comment period. Those are the only two we had on the agenda. If anybody else wants to speak, you have three minutes. Does anybody would like to speak? Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna close the public comment and move to consent agenda.
Mayor and councilor, your consent agenda items, we had discussed G through M. You removed item L. So your consent agenda consists of items G through M, minus item L.
Alright, we have the consent agenda to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call that?
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
May I refer to Foster?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Broadway?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Councilmember Aiko?
Yes.
Alright, consent agenda is approved. Uh, items requiring individual action, we have none. City manager report?
Mayor and councilor, you've heard, and I just want to share with the community so they can say things over the next couple of months. But we have two of our department heads that are retiring, uh, towards the end of the year. Our first is Jimmy Rowe, our planning director, has been with the city thirty-eight some years, Jimmy. Uh, and, uh, so he'll, he'll be here another month or two, he's the end of December. So as those seem in the community wish Jimmy well, he didn't want to go out with a big bang, but we'll have something that we can talk and, and thank Jimmy for his service. And then our fire chief, Gary Whaley, we alluded to that earlier, with over thirty-five years of service, is retiring at the end of November. And so two pretty big, uh, spots to fill, but just want to, uh, say thank you publicly. We'll get a chance to do that again, and then let the community know that's going on, so they can wish them well as well. So that's all I have this evening.
Alright, Mr. Attorney?
No reports there.
Alright, councilman reports, so let me do this, uh, I got two resolutions. Let me just real quick do them, so we'll have those done. And then we can, uh, do councilman comments. My first one is Resolution 201775, express appreciation for service rendered by Brandon Davis as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than nine years. Brandon Davis retires on November 1, 2017, as a fire captain with the Goldsboro Fire Department, city of Goldsboro with more than nine years of service. Brandon began his career on October 8, 2008, as a firefighter with the Goldsboro Fire Department in the city of Goldsboro. On February 20, 2013, Brandon was promoted to fire engineer with the fire department. On January 1, 2017, Brandon was promoted to fire captain with the Goldsboro Fire Department, where he has served to his retirement. Brandon has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant, who has gained admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro desire, on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, to express to Brandon Davis their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Therefore, it be resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during Brandon's tenure with the city. Number two, we offer Brandon our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated to the official message of the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect from this, the 16th day of October, next 2017. Offer this for adoption.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, raise your hand? Motion carries. Alright, the next proclamation we have is gonna be very important to some folks. I'm not sure how many in this room, but there may be some kids somewhere watching that might like this. This is "Safety First on Halloween." Whereas it is desired responsibility of the city of Goldsboro to promote the safety and welfare of the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, the city council is concerned that our young citizens participate in the traditional Halloween trick-or-treat activities in a safe and orderly manner. The city council feels the best methods for promoting a safe and orderly Halloween is through a proclamation from the mayor setting forth the guidelines for these activities. Therefore, I chuck out on the way to the city of Goldsboro, do hereby proclaim "Safety First on Halloween" and encourage all citizens of Goldsboro to promote and observe the following safety guidelines. Parents are asked to supervise the Halloween trick-or-treat activities of their children, and to ensure that trick-or-treat activities are limited to children under the age of sixteen. Trick-or-treat hours will be observed from 6:00 PM till 8:00 PM on Tuesday, October 31, 2017. Trick-or-treat activities should be confined to youngsters on neighborhood. Residents who wish to participate in trick-or-treat are asked to leave a porch light or other outdoor light on during these hours. Parents are asked to explain to children that homes with no outdoor light are not participating in trick-or-treat, and these homes should be passed up during the activities. These guidelines are set forth in hope that all citizens of Goldsboro will enjoy a happy, safe, and orderly Halloween. Uh, there I set my hand in the fixess, city of Goldsboro, this is the 16th day of 2017. So that's our Halloween safety thing. And the only thing I would say is, a lot of people driving through neighborhoods and all, so be sure everybody's going slow. Be sure your kids are wearing reflective things. We don't want, the last one who wants anybody to get hurt. So with that, um, that's all our proclamations, and we'll move to councilman reports. And we'll start with Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Uh, just a few things I want to just, uh, discuss. Might be over three minutes, sir. Last year this time, we had a hurricane, um, and, um, it devastated our city and our county. And I recall visiting shelters, living in the ear to those affected, helping to distribute water and other supplies that were needed. Um, it's a year later, and citizens are still literally trying to get through the storm. Let's continue to keep them in our prayers. So that's one issue, and then, um, the GWTA board. I sit on that board, um, the GWTA Transportation Board. And I just wanted to update, uh, to my fellow councilmen and my citizens, our citizens. I notice a major concern with the lack of bus shelters in our community. And I discussed this issue with GWTA board members, and we all agree that there's a need. And we unanimously agreed to purchase a bus shelter on Elm, in front of Dillard Academy, and, um, also, uh, one on Wayne Memorial. Um, if there's anyone that needs a shelter in the city, and, you know, you think that it will help our seniors, um, our people who may not have transportation, um, call GWTA and let them know, um, that you're, you know, like us to consider a shelter there. Also, uh, we had a great time. Um, our mayor, he couldn't be there, but I was there in behalf of the mayor and the council here. Uh, we had, uh, at Dillard Academy, we had Walk and Bike to School Day. And it's a national holiday where you go out and you walk with the kids. And I'm gonna tell you, it was amazing. It was on October 4th. Um, I had the pleasure of accompanying Dillard Academy faculty, um, and, um, students early in the morning to walk to school. I enjoyed walking and talking with our kids, our future. I learned about tiger pride. These kids were great, and are and will be great future leaders. Shout out to all who helped to shape these young people. And also, Dillard Academy is having a fundraiser for a playground. They have no playground there, they actually, the city allows them to use WA Foster to go to their events though. So we need to try to figure out if we can help them out, they want to get a playground. And they started raising funds, and if you would like to help them, all you have to do is call Dillard Academy, nothing is too small. Also, I want to shout out a local hero, his name is Freedom. And with Freedom, he does a lot of things with the kids here. He takes his time, he doesn't ask to, you know, be observed from media. He just does it from his heart. And I think Councilman Foster, he also helps out tremendously, he lends support with his vehicles and other things. So, I want to shout out Councilman Foster for that as well. And tomorrow, we're gonna have an Alvin Ellie, Alvin Ellie II will be performing at the Paramount Theater. And that's gonna be at 7:30. The New York Times declares, "This is nothing like an evening spent with Ellie II." This is a performance that will move you spiritually. So shout out to Sherri and the Paramount team for making this happen in our community. And, to sum up everything, our work session today consisted of loading zone approved for seniors at Waynesboro House, so now they'll have the opportunity to actually have a space that's dedicated to them, where they can go, and they can bring their groceries up, they can, you know, bring their furniture up, and they won't have to worry about any issues. So, you know, I want to thank the city for making that happen as well. And we also, the council approved, they approved the future wedding, wedding downtown, but, you know, that's also gonna affect some closings of our street up to four hours, so. That was one thing that was discussed. So at the end, I just want to say, in the words of Russell Simmons, "God bless and good night." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Williams, since you are on the gateway, you might want to mention about the veterans riding free, 'cause I know we talked about, and, so, because I think everybody's got a brochure, but...
Yes.
But I do appreciate the Gateway Board, from November 6 to Saturday, November the 11, I don't know if the TV picks this up or not, but any military or veteran person, then I can ride free on the gateway. And last year, they had really good participation, so hopefully they'll do that this year.
So if you're a veteran, ride the bus.
Mr. Broadway?
No comment, sir.
Mr. Stevens?
No, no comment tonight.
Mr. Foster?
No comment.
Alright, thank you everybody for coming, and we stand adjourned.